Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call to order the May ninth, 2022 Forest Grove School District Board of Directors meeting at 5:30 sharp. We will do roll call. Mark?
Yeah, I'm here.
Brad?
I'm here.
Val?
Here.
Narcie?
Here.
And Sonya is absent tonight. And who's that sweet dog I saw? Nice.
Hank is present also.
Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll do introductions. I'm Kate Randuski, Board Chair.
Brad DeFerrell, Board Member.
David Warner, Communications.
Eileen Clip, Business.
John O'Neill, Assistant Superintendent.
Speaker from you on IT Department.
Summer, why don't you introduce yourself and I'll just call some folks out here.
Okay. Summer Johnson, Principal at Tomacall Upper Elementary.
Yeah.
Juliana Kelly, Principal at Neil Armstrong Middle School.
Karen?
Karen O'Neill, High School Principal.
Colleen.
Colleen Lord, Assistant Principal at the High School.
Danielle.
Danielle Thomas, Assistant Principal at Tomacall.
And I think that's everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Approval of tonight's agenda? Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All right, we will do a roll call vote. Mark? Brad?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Narcie?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. Correspondence and celebrations. Dave, is that you?
Yeah, that's me. And I'm gonna just start out with my comments here. First, I just wanted to thank everybody for being flexible tonight. Instead of this being our first in-person board meeting, we went back to virtual because I came down with COVID and I just appreciate everybody being flexible to allow me to still participate tonight. COVID is staying pretty steady, contrary to my example. We've been averaging between about zero and eight staff for the last three, three to four weeks. So we haven't been increasing. We seem to have kind of a, still kind of a constant buzz of it. We're somewhere between about zero and 20 students with COVID. And that's been for the last three weeks. So I don't think we're really seeing an increase. It's just kind of continuing to buzz out there for us. The high school will perform a beautiful city play by our Unified Students, which will perform at 7:00 PM on March 20th and 21st. All community board members are invited to attend. It'll be held in the high school auditorium. This Friday will be the annual FFA budget banquet at the high school cafeteria on May 13th at 6:00 PM. As you know, this is an annual event with a long and rich history and we're excited to hold this event again in person as we come out of the pandemic. Again, board members are, you're invited to attend. Viking House, it's hard to believe, but we're already near the end of the year and the Viking House is going up for sale. So they're gonna do their, the Viking House will resume the annual in-person open house, which will be held on Saturday, May 21st, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. This year's Viking Houses again behind, located behind the high school and it's open to the community. And then lastly, you may have started to see the class of 2022 Forest Grove High School senior signs appearing in yards across our attendance area. The high school administration, the staff are working tirelessly to get all 400 plus signs up within the next two weeks. We're very excited for this year's graduation to be in person at the gym in the Basinski Center on Saturday, June 4th at 10:00 AM. And that's it for our announcements.
Thanks, Dave. I see on here for correspondence from a letter from ODE, Ray, contributions to Annual Migrant Education Conference.
Okay, yes, and I'm gonna have to say that in my COVID-ness, I don't have that letter.
Okay.
Is there a copy that you can read? Because I would like to read it.
I have it printed out on my computer at, or my desk at work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Of quarantining, I don't have it with me.
Oh, can we read it at the next board meeting?
We can.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, great, all right.
Same with the calendar notes, Kate.
Okay.
I'll send them to you.
Okay. And then what about the recognition, School Nurses, Nurses Day, May 11?
Yeah, if you just want to read that, that would be.
Okay. Okay, I'd be happy to do that. School Nurses Day, May 11th, 2022. The National School Nurses Day is observed on the Wednesday during National Nurses Week in May every year. This is a day when we come together as a nation to honor the field of school nursing. This event honors their daily efforts of school nurses to ensure all students' well-being, safety, and academic ability. All right. Um, so Dave, you've already given your superintendent report, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we're good. So unscheduled public appearances, I will read this. The board appreciates community members sharing information during public comments. Public comments should be submitted either by filling out a comment card for in-person comments prior to the start of the board meeting, or through the designated form on the webpage to be read by district staff, or registered Zoom participants who indicated through the form they wanted to provide their comment live. Public comments will be limited to three minutes, as is the protocol for board meetings. Public criticism or complaints about school district personnel are not allowed at this time. And I believe that there is two comments to be read by district staff, correct Kathy?
That's correct. I've got those, Kate.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Okay, we've got two. The first one is from Heather J. Watson, who's a community member. This letter is in follow-up to what occurred at the FGHS performance of Mamma Mia for the NAMM students on April 6th. The NAMM students earned the field trip by exceeding a specific GPA. It was a privilege, but the behavior of some of the students and lack of intervention by any staff, including the NAMMs principal who was in attendance, is appalling. My children were not in attendance, but their friends were performers and thus the ripple effect impacted them, just like it does many in a small community when something like this happens. To begin with, I don't think that play was appropriate for the age group and unnecessary language, sexual innuendos, and the overall content, but to hear the behavior of the seventh and eighth graders and the lack of teacher or direct involvement to stop it is disgraceful. There were vulgar comments from the seventh, eighth graders directed at an individual performer when she was in the audience waiting to go on stage, and then similar comments were shouted at performers. These comments are inappropriate to share at a public school board meeting, but in my opinion, it was sexual harassment. The audience demonstrated other disrespectful behavior as well. I found out the morning after the performance, the NAMMs principal was in attendance and did not stop the behavior, but offered an apology afterwards and stated the students who caused issues were addressed. The entire auditorium witnessed a tacit approval of this behavior because it was not addressed during the performance. I am relatively new to the FGSD, however, the negative reputation of NAMMs is well-known in the community and has been for many years. I understand teachers shouldn't have to be babysitters and parents need to step up and instill good morals, character, and common decency in their children. However, when behavior like what occurred at the play is allowed to continue without staff involvement, the school failed all those involved. Behavior like this will lead to more and more upset parents and continue to taint the reputation of the school district. Thank you for your time.
So I'd like to make just a couple of comments. One is that I have talked with Juliana about this and I will, I'll respond, will respond. Not everything that, that the parent is talking about actually happened in that order. Juliana did not know about the comments that were made. She wouldn't just sit there and watch that happen. But there were some things that they would change and do differently. So Juliana, we'll, we'll work together. I'll put back a response to this parent and also let you know kind of where we came up.
Do you want to read the next comment, David?
Yep, I'll go right ahead. The one is from Paula Freeman, who's a parent of an FGHS student. She says, I can't seem to find information regarding the district-wide grading policy online. I have reached out to the high school regarding the grading policy and haven't heard back from anyone. I am also interested in knowing the evidence-based research slash rationale behind the grading policy. Long story short, my student went from a solid B in their class to an F with one test that was taken last week towards the end of the semester. How can one test cancel out every other test and project and project completed in this class? Also, why is that if they don't pass the test, they don't get any credit for any correct answers? They did get correct. I believe they can retake the test and get a percentage of the grade for their, for the retake. My student has tried very hard to not stress out about this and not have it affect them, but they have worked so hard to maintain a GPA above 3.75 and they are very stressed about not doing well on the retake. Those are, that's again from Paula Freeman. Those are the two comments we have.
And Mrs. Freeman and I talked today, talked through the whole standards-based grading and I listened to her and we got a lot of things talked through. So I think we are, we're good, but we probably have some additional education around standards-based grading coming out of COVID.
Yeah.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate that. I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of routine, non-controversial items to be voted on under one motion. Are there any items within the consent items a board member or the superintendent wishes to discuss separately? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
A second?
Narcie, a second.
Discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Narcie?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. Motion is approved. Go on to, now to the presentation, the impact of the non-renewal of the school resource officer. Okay, and I, who's gonna lead that? Dave, are you gonna start?
Yeah, I'm gonna start that out. Let me get everything loaded up here. So thanks. Let's see, you should be seeing my slideshow now. Thanks, I wanted to first introduce the folks from our committee who are gonna talk about you, about the decision, the impact of the decision not to renew the SRO com, contract. First, Dave Parker is superintendent and then Karen and Colleen are here from the high school. And then I've got Juliana from the middle school, Summer and Danielle are here from the upper elementary. They, we were all on a committee and the, we invited anyone from the committee to present to you. Nobody else kind of jumped in. And so these are the folks from our committee who got, were given that responsibility. Last summer, when the vote, when the board voted not to move forward with the SRO contract, the other thing that was said is that you wanted me to bring back some information about how the year went. And so that's what we're doing here. We're summarizing, this is, we're gonna summarize a lot of data. So I'm just gonna tell you right now, it's gonna be a little bit overwhelming, but there's no decision tonight. We want to present to you kind of what, what we did with this community, committee and what we learned. And then we're gonna come back with some more information, but we have time right now for you to, after we're done presenting tonight, to actually go back. I'll take and share with you the, the actual documents from the committee and you can look at them, you can see what their responses were when we ran, when we started doing the group work. So I just wanted you to know that tonight isn't your only night to be able to ask questions because we're gonna, we've got a lot of data to go through. We're gonna hold questions to the end, just so we can move through the material. What I believe you asked us to do is to review and report what's happened in the district since last spring around, is there any new or relevant research? What was the old research? What's the school district data? How many times have we called the police? What's the police department data? What is, how many times have they responded out to our, our sites? And then the, the impact on various groups in the district. Again, as we started going into this, there's definitely been an impact. So in February, we brought together a committee to review these materials. Their job wasn't to say whether or not we wanted an SRO or not, but to simply look at all of the things that are going on from different viewpoints and make sure we just had gone through all of the different viewpoints that there may be about an SRO in our schools. At the outset of this, we had three district office folks, we had two board members, we had a principal and assistant principal from the high school, middle school, and upper elementary. We had two staff members from each school. We started this committee with two students from each of those schools and then two parents from each of those schools. Now, what I will tell you is, is that the, the students kind of pretty quickly dropped off because of, they were practicing for the play and getting involved in their sports. And so we did some things later to make sure that we got student viewpoint on this. Parents, again, we kind of struggled keeping them in our committee too. Review and report, research, the FGSD data. There are kind of three main roles. And again, when you get this, when we share this presentation with you, I've linked in the documents. So the, the blue underlined pieces here, you can click on it and it'll take you right out to those, those places. Basically, it's fostering positive school climates, education, and law enforcement. Those are the three main roles and specifically, the SRO is not to get involved in our school discipline unless there is some kind of nexus between law enforcement or breaking of a law and then the discipline. So we, as a committee, we went and stared, we went and broke into small groups and the committees talked about these different roles. And then they came back with what they felt aligned with their thinking and what they didn't think they're aligned with your thinking. So what you're seeing here is actually the actual comments by the folks on the committee. And I'm just gonna, this'll all be there for you when you go back to look at it, but you know, on the aligned part, relationships with students, education for students in classes and, and staff, relationships with administrators to help interactions go smoothly and support students. SRO more successful, responsive with abuse situations to DHS. The kids don't know DHS and we've had several of those situations come up this year. SRO is helping to de-escalate situations. So all of that aligned with our committee. What, the, the questions they had, what wasn't aligned is what is hands-off for the SRO? So what things are they getting involved in and what things are they not getting involved with? Training is extremely important. Trauma-informed practices, knowing families and students well. What role does the school district have in selecting the SRO? This is a big issue for us. Role that the SRO can play depends a lot on the person in that role. Like, this is a very person-dependent thing. The, do they like to work with kids? Do they enjoy being with kids? Just like teachers, we need to make sure that these folks who are interacting with our kids like that interaction. So those were kind of the, the things about the roles that, that came up. I think, again, the biggest issue that I, that came out of this was this issue around, is the SRO meant to be there to intimidate and to participate in our school discipline? And that's a, that's no, that's not what is best practice here. And now I'm gonna hand it off.
All right, I'll, Dave, I'll tell you when I'm ready for you to switch slides, okay?
Perfect.
So we're starting with the research, just exactly what we did with the, the committee when we all got together, as we started with the research. And as a committee, we all hope to find research that was going to support having or removing an SRO from, from our schools. It would have made our work a whole lot easier and we probably would have been done many months ago had we found that exact research. Unfortunately, what we found in the little research that was out there on the effectiveness of school resource officers in our schools was that it was mostly inconclusive about whether or not students feel safer or that schools are made safer when an SRO is present. The research also associated the presence of police on campus with more crime and student arrests and increasing this, the school-to-prison pipeline. The research also presented data that more students of color receive suspensions and citations. However, the research out there really doesn't fit the demographics of Forest Grove either. We found that as our committee. The research cited schools located in densely populated cities such as LA, which has a very different demographic, obviously, and has different needs than, than Forest Grove. So although some of this research may be true for more urban schools, what we can't say is that this research fits completely at Forest Grove School District. And that was what our committee was really tasked to do. Okay, Dave. Some of the things we wanted to pull out of the research, quotes that we found that we thought were really impactful as we managed to go through the data and the research. This one, which is according to the National Association of School Resource Officers. Officers working in schools generally play three main roles, which are ones that, that Dave has already alluded to. Law enforcer, educator, and informal counselor, and mentor. Okay. In the research in brief, which is a school-based law enforcement article written by authors who are part of the Regional Education Laboratory at West Ed Justice and Prevention Research, they state that although there are some research findings that support the merits of school-based law enforcement, the consensus of the available evidence does not support the belief that police presence makes schools safer overall. Our committee was tasked with discussing the perception of a safe school and what that means for all students, including our BIPOC students. And also, what does police presence look like? Is an SRO considered police presence if their three main roles are, like I said, law enforcer, educator, and informal counselor, and mentor? Okay. The idea of school shootings is brought up a lot in conversation about SROs as a reason that they are needed in schools, but the research about school resource officers states that the body of research on the effectiveness of SROs does not address whether or not their presence in schools has deterred mass shootings. There isn't enough research out there to say that SROs deter mass shootings. But also, our committee had to decide if this was one of the main reasons that we are looking at putting an SRO back into our buildings or not. Okay, Dave? It is well-known that students of color face more suspensions and consequences for behavior than their white peers. And research, as this quote says, indicates that people of different races and ethnicities experience and perceive police differently. This is a problem within our schools and one that we discuss often as administrators in this district, as we try to be proactive in making changes to our policies and to our practices so that we aren't consequencing students of colors, color at higher rates than, than their white peers. Okay. However, there was also research that the committee wanted to highlight as important as well. The committee recognizes the need for an SRO to be aware of implicit biases and to be culturally responsive to students. The research points to effective SROs having this type of training. Effective SROs being those who are educators and informal mentors and counselors as well. The research showed that SROs who had significant specialized training were better equipped to handle situations involving students. So they really wanted to, to point that out. SROs shouldn't be expected to reduce crime or improve people's perceptions of safety or deter mass shootings. That, that was information that came directly from our research that our committee wanted to highlight. Instead, they need to be seen as resources on our campuses and as someone who can facilitate and provide additional resources to students who may need help or support. The research clearly says that SROs should be proactive in providing resources and educating and informally mentoring students instead of reacting with punishments. This is, this goal would be to keep students safe and away from committing crimes. So being proactive is extremely important. The last point to highlight that our committee wanted to make sure that we discussed during this presentation is the importance of building relationships in order to be an effective member of the school community. Much like a teacher who must first work to build relationships in their classrooms before students take a chance at doing some of that harder, harder work or the hard math problems. The SRO must first get to know students and families in the community to be able to, to serve them as well. So there is all kinds of, of points that they wanted to, to make from the research. And there you go, that's it. Okay. So, thank you, Colleen. So after we took some time looking at the research, we looked at our local data with help from Brigetta, who's amazing with data and turning that into visuals. I really appreciate her. So we have a couple of data points on these slides coming up. So this one is a pre-pandemic data. So this is 338 calls that were received through, through our local law enforcement and the types of calls that you'll see here. So you'll see like alarm calls, those happen all the time. And harassment's on there, extra patrol, which you'll see on the next slide is, is a huge chunk. So actually, David, if you'll go to the next one, I'll talk about that a little bit. That extra patrol really jumped up on this one, this, for this school year as of February. So that's several months ago now. You can see how many more calls we had here. Extra patrol is things like if there is somebody trespassing, if we need, if there's somebody who, if a kid ran away, if we need an extra person on duty, for example, when we had the threat at the high school in December. But you can see that this number goes up quite significantly. And go ahead, Dave, to the next slide. There's a historical call data from, all the way from 2017, 18 until this school year, and there's quite a jump there. And we could probably guess that the difference there is that this year, we're making all of our calls straight through the Washington County non-emergency line, which is what this is showing here. Whereas in the past, we might have just contacted our SRO directly. That's a guess that we have on this one. And go ahead to the next slide. We also tracked this year our calls that came from admin directly to law enforcement. So we kept those in a log. We had about 87 calls that were made from summertime through February. And those calls were about these highlighted areas here, about what you would expect in our schools. So I think what's important to know about these data pieces, it's less about the numbers that we're seeing and more about the fact that we still had to call police regardless if we had an SRO or not. There are things that come up that require us to call police, such as the threat at the high school or or having marijuana on campus. And in our time, we had more than 20 different officers come to work with us, with our students, whereas before we would have our SRO be the primary person and we would potentially work with some other officers when she was not available for whatever reason. But having 20 separate adults or more working with our kids, we could really see some differences in just the style. And nothing, it was nothing wrong. Like, our police showed up for us, which is amazing. But the, the ways that different police officers work with kids, we really saw some differences with that. Okay, go ahead to the next slide. And so some of the feedback that we got from our committee based on this data that was collected, I already stated that regardless of an SRO or not, we needed to call the police for a variety of reasons. The police responded, but it was somebody different every time. We had some questions about how this data might look different if there was an SRO present and there were a few things specifically at the high school that we noticed that would have been different, but regardless of SRO or not, there was marijuana, there was fights that happened and reasons to call the police, and that was historical even pre-pandemic. Okay. And passing that off to, I believe, Karen.
Me. So in an effort to hear from kids, we conducted a survey that we basically took through our social studies classes. And we made it voluntary, so students did not have to take the survey. But we thought it important, as we went through our committee, to really hear from students, their perspective, especially from our students of color, which came up again in Especially from our students of color, which came up again and again in our committee conversations. So you will see in the data that there's a limited number of ninth grade responses. We don't have a required ninth grade social studies class. So there, there are some ninth graders in social studies, and so we do have some data. Roughly 1,300 students were given the opportunity. Obviously, most of those ninth graders were not participating, and we have 708 responses. Just to give our demographics and we look at the data so that you have these numbers. Currently, Forest Grove High School has 63% students of color and 37% white. So these are the questions that we asked. So we wanted to be able to disaggregate the data. So we asked students about their gender, their race, ethnicity, gen, gender grade. How frequently had they interacted with an SRO? If they had interacted, how would you rate that interaction? So we could gauge whether it was a positive or a negative interaction. We wanted to get their idea of what they thought was the main purpose or function of an SRO. And they had multiple options that they could choose from, and they could choose one, they could choose five. And then, um, this is the big one, and I have it bolded because I will follow up with some specific responses from kids. But we have students who do not feel comfortable with a uniformed officer on campus. And so asking students, what are some of the reasons for that? And then what are some ideas to improve that? So that we kind of left it open-ended so we can get some student voice. I also put in a couple of pieces around our, our climate survey. So every fall and spring, we do a climate survey so that we can really get ideas from kids on how they're feeling about a variety of things. And safety is one of them, both physical and emotional safety. And then we ask them about specific areas of the building. And so in, in this survey, we asked them for possible solutions as well. And so that was a couple of the questions. And then the final questions were, I believe, an SRO is important to have on campus? And because, so that they could just wide open, why do you think it's important or not important? So they had both, both responses that they had options for. So, um, these are actual responses from kids. I did not, other than maybe a few typos as they were typing them in, I did not change any of their responses. So, um, "The school is mostly made up of brown kids. And when you're black or Mexican, interactions with police can be scary when you see and hear about police brutality towards minorities." This is one of our African-American male students. And his response to that question that I put in bold, his response was, "I disagree with an SRO on campus." Maybe it's just the association of seeing the police during a bad situation. So maybe students assume that something bad happened at the school, and that's why the officer is there. By making it clear to students that the SRO is there for the safety of the school, it would make people feel more safe. This is a Latinx female, and she agrees with an SRO on campus. Another student, "I believe the SRO should not be involved with student discipline in any way unless the student is committing a violent crime or vandalizing or something physically harmful to other people." Response time to a threat in the school, government organization should not be delayed in any manner, especially because students are required to come here. This is a white male that strongly agrees with the SRO on campus. "I think students don't like uniformed police officers because of what is shown all over social media, and that's police abusing their power. I believe that one way to improve that would be to not be fully uniformed, but still recognizable as an officer." So one of our Latinx female students, and they agree, she agrees with an SRO on campus. "I feel like people just haven't been exposed to police officers enough. I think that if there was more information or more understanding and exposure to police officers and why they are in the school, then it would be easier to be accepted in the school." This is a white female strongly agrees with an SRO on campus. Police officers often already have a very deep-rooted negative connotation in some people's perception. In whatever ways possible that an officer could appear more welcoming, they would probably be able to, at least to an extent, negate this effect. This is a Latinx male that agrees with an SRO on campus. "I am one of those students, and it is most likely due to trauma." Again, remember the question is, many of our stores, several students feel uncomfortable with a uniformed police officer. So what can we do to make them feel more comfortable and what's the reason for it? So it's the white female that strongly disagrees with an SRO on campus. One way for students to become comfortable with an SRO is to have one come to school and have the students have conversations with them and gain trust or respect on a personal level. They did, this person, student chose not to identify their race or ethnicity. They are male and strongly agrees with an SRO on campus. I believe the reason is that they only have heard bad things about officers or have bad experiences with them. Maybe officers can talk to kids at our school more and just be friendly, like when in the hallways and stuff. And again, white female strongly agrees with an SRO. Racism and bias. Also, we only see officers while they are investigating something. This is a non-binary Latinx student that disagrees with an SRO on campus. And I think this is our final one. And again, I just tried to get some, a variety of, of statements from kids. There was a lot of repetition, a lot of repetition in their responses. But I wanted to get just a wide variety of responses and also demographics. I think some of the only reasons people would feel uncomfy with an SRO would be because of the recent cases of police discrimination against certain populations. So make sure you get an SRO that is well aware of the cultural diversity in Forest Grove. If something bad were to happen, we would have an officer here instead of having to call 911 and wait. It would be better just to have one here. This is a white female that strongly agrees with an SRO on campus. Uniforms put the officer in power, and that is scary, especially since they are armed. This could be fixed by using alternative methods to protect people. This is one of our Asian female students that disagrees with an SRO on campus. Students may feel intimidated at seeing a police officer and not knowing why they are here or there. To improve these relationships, perhaps it would be, would help for SROs to introduce themselves during advisory classes. This is one of our Latinx males that agrees with an SRO on campus. So here's some of the data slides. So of our students of color, we had 400 students of color respond to the survey. And you can see there that this is their, what they think would be the main purpose. So providing assistance in a crisis, you can see across the board, whether it's our students of color, our white students. That's their number one, responding to a crisis. The other two that are very closely related are building positive relationships and investigating and responding. And you can see across the board, I mean, they definitely vary by percentages, but those are the next top. So building positive relationships, investigating and responding. But the first one, on the top one, is the provide assistance in a crisis. So the number of interactions, so 80% of our students of color have had no interactions with an SRO. And 72% of our white students have had no interaction with an SRO. And then you can kind of see it as it goes from there. The 11% and 12%, so students of color, 11%, white students, 12%. And, and then it's kind of broken down. Remember, we had 708 responses to the survey. So if you take our students of color and our white students, those first two, it is 682. And so we've got some duplication, right, in, in our students across the board. So if you just look at the students of color and the white students, it's almost the total number of students in the survey, if that makes sense. So that last question, I believe, an SRO is important to have on campus. This is how that broke out. So if our students of color, 80% of them said yes. Our white students, 82, 82% of them said yes. So out of the total survey responses, that's 682 students that responded within those first two columns. And again, relatively close percentage-wise, 80 and 82% that agreed.
Hi. So one of the things that we would like to highlight tonight is just a couple of stories from our experiences working directly with SROs in our schools and the impact that, that has had on our educational communities and on our students. I just wanted to note that we really value the relationship that we have with the police department and are just thankful that somebody answers the phone in response when we, when we need them. It's, it's a difficult call to make, and so to have the support of the police department is really important to the work that we do. Sometimes we found it challenging when the training of the police department is directed more toward primarily adult criminals rather than in school, we're working with students and, and as young as 10 and 11 and 12-year-olds. The purpose of these stories is not to devalue the work of the police, but to highlight the differences in training between a police officer who works with the general public and the training necessary to work with students in the role of SRO, especially considering the ages and experiences of our students. By having a different officer respond to a variety of calls or a different officer to respond to each call, we often get a variety of responses, all of which might be appropriate in their role within the community, within their training, within the police department, and might also have a different impact on students in a school environment.
Oh, sorry. Hang on. Is everybody there? Did I lose you?
You're good, Dave. I just, that slide right there, the impacting us one. And then I think if we start with high school, maybe, I know Summer was having some sound issues. Oh, she's back. Perfect.
There we go. Okay, sorry about that.
Did you want me to start at the high school or Summer started?
Let's start at the high school and then we'll just go from there.
Yeah, so like Danielle said, we've had really good relations with the police department, and we appreciate working together with them on all of these situations, even under the circumstances that have been, you know, trying to figure out how to navigate all of this since the beginning of the school year without an SRO. But this new way of working together definitely presents some challenges. Last week, we had a safety issue that had taken place a couple of days earlier, over the weekend and off-campus. And a police report needed to be filed. Students didn't know how to go about doing this police report from home. And so they came to school, we heard what happened, and we wanted to help them file the police report. And we called about 10:00 AM on that day to have somebody come out to the school to take that, that report. At, and we have to call dispatch to do that. And so at 2:15, we called dispatch again to have an officer come to campus before school was out at 3:11. But we received a call back saying that there just wasn't enough people available to come take the report. Unfortunately, it meant the students would have to call in when they got home. So officer availability can definitely be a challenge, but it hasn't, it hasn't been too many times. But in this situation, it definitely posed an issue for some of our students who didn't have the resources at home to be able to file that report when they, when they got home from school. There is a story that I do want to highlight when we did have an SRO. And, and it's made me think about what would happen potentially not having an SRO on campus now if the same story were to happen. And so a couple of years ago, before the pandemic, before the SRO was still in our building, we had a report of a student who had a potential firearm on campus. The SRO took charge immediately, and we walked calmly, quietly down the hallway to the classroom where the student was removed from class without incident. We were in possession of the backpack. We had the student with us within about five minutes of the original report without any incident. It was such a calm event that the classroom of students and the teacher reported afterwards feeling like the student had won a pride award, which is one of the, the things that we do to highlight students' positive behavior. And, and this made me think, because a couple of weeks ago, a similar event took place at one of our area high schools. I think it might have been Beaverton. Is that, is that correct? Do you remember, Dave?
I think it was Beaverton.
Yeah, so there was a report of a student who had a firearm on campus. Police came in, guns drawn. It must have been a really terrifying event for students who didn't know what was going on. And I look back on the situation that we had with our SRO on campus, thankful that it ended really well and worried about what would potentially happen if I called dispatch now with the same concern and report from other students who had a, had a concern about a student having a weapon on campus and what experience that would be like for the other students to witness and the trauma that could possibly come from that. So that's something that's given me some pause recently. Thank you.
So my example from Neil Armstrong from this year, we've had a couple of situations where kids have posted on social media, "Don't come to school on Monday. I'm going to shoot up the school," something along those lines. Excuse me. That was gross. So we have two situations that happened this year where what was said was almost identical, and they were handled completely differently by our law enforcement for whatever reason. In one case, law enforcement came and kind of interviewed the student, and that student just had a warning of like, hey, we don't talk that way. That's not okay. And went about our day. The other student, the student was read Miranda rights, student was referred to juvenile. So for two almost identical situations, two different officers came in with their training and handled the situation pretty differently. As a school, we handled each one, the same with our systems. But just having, having different officers and having those discrepancies and not having that consistency is something that I have really reflected on this year with having multiple officers report. Thank you.
Hello, I would like to share just a situation that happened this year. There are times where even elementary schools, upper, and even, even our typical K4s do need to call the police as well. And the situation I just wanted to highlight was with a particular student who struggles to regulate, so much so that they actually have an IEP to provide additional supports with that just that, that dysregulation that they often experienced. That particular student became so dysregulated that they left campus. And our protocol is to reach out to law enforcement as well as parents to come and support as they leave campus for safety reasons. And this particular student, we are adjacent to the cemetery, so went to the cemetery. Law enforcement was the first to arrive besides us, those of us staff that were there to, to just keep an eye on it and then, you know, work together in that way. The police approached the students, and the student ran away from them, still in a very high state of dysregulation. The officers ended up responding by physi, like physically restraining the student and then moving the student to the police car to continue to dysregulate or to, to can, to dysregulate and have them in a safe space. The, the entire time, the student was screaming, crying, and yelling. That, that continued until the parent or parents did arrive and were able to then work to de-escalate the student and transfer them to their own vehicle. That is not a typical response. We do call for this type of thing when students leave campus for safety and support. And, and this, this officer or these officers responded in the way that they are, are supposed to respond, and they followed their protocols in interacting with typically adults in a very different situation. And so it's not to say that they did things really wrong, but the response that they, that they, how they responded really was in, in no way trauma-informed or really in the best interest of a child as they are used to responding to adults in a very different situation. And so that, it, it really did, it was traumatizing to watch. And it was, you know, traumatizing for that, that particular child in that situation. And so I think that just previously, it would have, it would have resulted in that, that officer, SRO, that would kind of take the lead and, and guide the next steps. And, and there would be a different set of protocols for law enforcement. And so that's just one that I think really And, and there would be a different set of protocols, uh, for law enforcement. And so that's just one that I think really highlights some of the impact of, of a person coming to support from PD, doing their job, but in a way that isn't um, as trauma informed and, and necessarily best for kids in this situation.
So that's what I want to spend some time talking about because again, um, we're, we work really well with the police and we're not saying that they're doing anything wrong. Our issue has more to do with this decision has created some impacts that I don't think we really expected. So here's some of the impacts as we see them. We've had more than 20 different officers respond to calls at district sites. For us to work with 20 different officers, we're gonna, we're just very inconsistent. These officers all have different abilities, affinity and success and working with students. Um, we have little information on what their training is, equity bias, de-escalation, working with students, working with students with disabilities. We have no input into who that officer is that shows up, um, in this situation. We're impacted by availability. Again, um, it's been a, an issue for Forest Grove. Just like everybody, they have the same staffing issue. So we also don't always get first run. I will say that again, when we've, when we've called the police in need of help, they've come. And so I don't want to say anything negative about that. It's just that this is a problem when we don't have somebody who's prioritized to us. Um, 80% of the 400 BIPOC students responded in the survey and 82% of the, um, non-BIPOC students believe the SRO is important on campus. Um, we went out and because we didn't have the kind of student inter- interaction in this committee, we went out and did this. We did it in the social studies classes because we felt that those classes were best able to have a conversation about this. And for kids to be able to express their opinions, whatever those were. And there's still an overwhelming, um, number of kids who are saying this. Um, boy, the big issue here is around inconsistent interactions, which is um, that's what, that's the big impact here. This isn't about, um, this is about, well, I'll keep moving here. Um, students have not, have felt not comfortable, um, reporting to officers. We've got several many stories of when they know the officer at school, it's easier for them to report child abuse. It's easier for them to repeat, um, report sex abuse. It's harder when you don't know who to call. That one student, the situation that Colleen was talking about was a harassment situation. And it really needed to get talked about that day. They were going home into a situation where other kids have been harassing, maybe, um, fighting and it needed someone to deal with it. When those kids get home, they're not going to make that phone call to the police. So again, um, communication between the police department and the school district has been severely hampered. Um, the one thing that we didn't know when we stopped this is, one of the things that we count on is, is the SRO has a radio. And so, um, when we need to get a hold of police, we're just one phone call away from having everybody in the Forest Grove Police Department know that something's going on. This has been a big issue for us. Um, arranging the security at the football games and the basketball games and, um, knowing the threat that we had in December. Um, the SRO would have handled all of that, um, coordination between the police department and us. Instead, what it did is it came up to John and I to make phone calls to the chief and to the lieutenant. And that should have just got handled, um, in a much more convenient or expeditious way. We also know that 20% of our students have an issue. Um, we understand that they felt uncomfortable about having that police officer. And what we heard from them because of, is that they want some changes in the way that SRO, um, behaves, functions, looks. And so we know that. Um, students in committee have all pointed to things that they want to make sure we change uh, moving forward. So I'm just going to lay it out here because of, um, I'm trying to be very clear. The decision that was made last year, I know, we all know that it was made with good intentions. But what that decision's meant is that you were basically ensuring that more of our kids are having negative experiences with the police. Um, by not having that police officer, this decision is creating a bigger problem. And that's not something that I would have picked out when it happened, but that's what the impact has been. So like it or not, we are going to call the police. You've already seen, even before the pandemic, we were running 300 to 400 different types of calls. Some of these are child abuse reports. Some of these are fights, some of these are, um, you know, there's a whole slew of different things. But we will be calling the police. We want to have input into who that officer is. Uh, we want to make sure that they have selection and training. They need to be trauma informed, equity and anti-racism, de-escalation. They need to want to interact with kids. And we don't have that right now. And so that's our present reality, um, as plain as I can lay it out there. So with that, I think now we're, uh, that was a lot. And it may be questions right now. It may be questions that you want to, um, uh, have me come back and do. But we would open it up for questions to any of us.
Dave, this is Narson.
Yep.
First of all, thank you and to all of your team for, um, providing this presentation was a very educational. And I really appreciate all the work that was put, um, into it from the students and the parents and the administrators. Um, I, I, uh, want to also say thank you for your comments. I'm looking at it from a different spin, all of this. I'm looking at it, um, from, I'm remembering, uh, last year, probably around this time and maybe around May, yeah, May, actually we are in May or June, you know, probably about a year ago. Where, um, I think that all of this has given the school an opportunity to really know what the SRO does and doesn't do. And I think that was explained at the beginning. Last year, uh, I was in a position where I was not clear exactly what the SRO did. In particular, when the job description was presented. And the job description when it was presented, um, didn't really have all of these, um, things that we would expect from a SRO, uh, safety officer, uh, whatever we might want to call it. Have it be available. It, to me, it appeared that, um, the SRO was there, but without really having the students understand what, um, he, she or their role was. And I feel like at this point with having taken the year to do this survey and, um, get to know what, what they should do or not do, or what scares or intimidates the kids, I think is really important. The, uh, the other thing too is that it allows me to, and these are my analysis, just my observations. Is that what, what type of system do we have within the Forest Grove School District in regards to harassment or bias? And I'm not sure that we have one. That, that's just a bigger systems issue. Because I did see, um, harassment there quite a bit and some of the harassment can elevate to something else. So I don't know, um, what it, what currently is in existence within the Forest Grove School District. Um, I have a bias because I'm a chief of equity, diversity and inclusion in my full-time job. And that was one of the things that we were also seeing quite a bit of police coming into the, uh, Pacific University. Because we didn't have a system in place. Once people knew what, one, understand what a harassment is, what is a bias, what's implicit, what's explicit. And I'm not sure that, that our kids may or may not know that at this particular point. So I'm just kind of putting that out there. Um, the issue with having more than 20, um, officers come in, I, that is concerning. And be, because we are inheriting a system that we don't have control over. And that is the police department in Forest Grove. Uh, 20 officers coming in at different times. It's a system that, that Forest Grove would be adapting. So that's a deeper conversation with, um, with the police department. I can tell you that the majority of the, uh, training that they're getting is actually from my office. Um, from a Pacific University and other vendors that have come through. So there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. Um, no system is perfect. Again, where I work, we have to go through an extreme amount of even training. Our, uh, we don't have SROs, we have safety officers. They needed to also be trained on how to handle a, a situation. So I'm, I'm just putting out that out there is a, um, I know Hillsboro right now is hiring quite a bit of safety officers. And I'm curious to what, what is that difference between a safety officer? Um, I think that's what they call it in SRO. Maybe it's the same thing, but I don't know. I'm, I'm wondering what other school districts are doing.
Yeah.
Um, let me see, I took some notes because that's the only way that I can remember things.
Do you want me to answer some of those while you're kind of collecting?
Um, no, I just have a few, a few more things. I think one thing that I just want to say that we need to be careful about assuming that this was slide 25. Um, I saw some bias come through, probably unintentional, uh, biased language. To assume that the police department will, um, that the police department, the police officers will respond to adult criminals. We don't know that every response that they do is for a criminal. It could be for something else. So we just need to be careful about how we, uh, we shouldn't assume. Um, and then I'm also just wondering what, um, what currently, what kind of training is our, um, our teachers and staff slash administrators also receiving about, I was really in, um, touched by the last, one of the last presentations about the child, um, who was, uh, not regulated. And, uh, you know, that was just heartbreaking to hear that, especially the trauma for the child. So I just wanted to say thank you for sharing that story. Um, that's it for now.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. One is I haven't gone out to get, we had some parents on the committee. But we haven't, I haven't pushed out any interactions with parents, either listening sessions or whatever. I figured we would do this first and then we can talk about what the next steps are for that. The other pieces, I took notes on, um, these, these various, um, our staff in a normal year, every, every month they're doing equity trainings. Um, it's part of our district equity team. There's about 50 people on it. They kind of plan what's happening at all of the different schools. So those are already, um, taking place. There's, again, there's a lot that we could do better, I'm sure. Um, so we're in a learning space there. Happy to talk about that. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't disagree with, um, where we ended up last year. What I just, what I know now is I do know what the impacts are. And so in moving forward, we, yeah, let's talk about what that job description would need to look like. And I think, um, for us to begin to actually sit down with the city and negotiate what are those changes that our kids are asking for, um, and the rest. So, yep. Thank you. Other questions? So, well, I, I, I probably didn't give enough wait time there. So for me, here's our next steps. I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna pull together an MOU. Um, the MOU is the agreement between two governmental entities. And it defines everything that we've just been talking about, which would be, what is the uniform of this officer? What is that? What is, what is the training specifically? Exactly. What is the accountability? Who is it that is going to be this person's, um, going to do the accountability? Um, we're going to go through and we, we're going to, um, put this in front of you again. And, um, I know, I mean, I'm doing that because I feel this strongly about it. Having 20 different officers responding to our schools is not productive for us. We've got to have a better way of doing this. Oh, that was the one question that you did ask Narson that I want to respond to. Safety officer. So we built into this budget, there is a point five. A point five safety officer. The issue here is the, the things that we need this person to do, it's a police officer. It is the person who's going to have a radio, who is going to be a liaison between the police officer and the school district. Um, we'll actually be hiring the safety officer too. Um, so that will happen either way, because we already put it, this would be Rob Ferris's position in Hillsboro. It's a, um, a person, used to be a person named Alex O, who would help coordinate some of these issues, work on our safety and preparedness pieces. But that's actually already in the budget, but they wouldn't be able to do the things that we're looking for. And then I'll bring this back to the board and we can have a conversation, um, about it and, um, we can make changes to it. I think, um, I had a, a, a little bit of a conversation. And I think it would be good to maybe bring some folks with me to do some of this, um, work with the city around what this MOU is. Um, I don't know if there's a couple of board members that I could, um, bring with me and then maybe, um, I don't know, but I just, again, I'm open to ideas here. It's just that this is, we can't do 20 plus officers responding to our school district. That is not good for us.
Dave, if I may suggest, um, is the MOU and all that is being drafted. One of the things that was very disappointing last time we had that, we had the job description and all that. It had no equity lens whatsoever at all. Um, and the little bit of, uh, diversity narrative or language was, were all the last bullets. Um, is it where, you know, the narrative is, is a job description. I'm just, um, it's on processing and based on the demographics that, um, were shared, um, earlier today with, um, the Latinx Hispanic population. Whatever we end up doing, there, there needs to be bilingual. There needs to be cultural. And we're not talking about cultural competency. We're talking about cultural humility. Um, here, uh, including, um, awareness of all of the other ISMS in particular for our second language learners or, or, um, special ed, uh, children. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out, how important, um, those things are.
Yep, absolutely. I'd be happy to work with anyone around that. Um, that was in our document last year, but like I said, I'm not married. I'm ready to do what we need to do to make this work. So whatever that is, we'll, all of us on the screen here, you're only hearing from me right now, but we have all talked. We're willing to do what we need to do to make this work. Totally agree that we need a bilingual, bicultural person in this spot. Totally agree. So I know this was a lot and I don't expect this to be the end of the conversation. So like I said, if you have questions, um, please feel free to send them to me. I'm more than happy to do some more homework on this. And then I'll start putting together kind of a plan to move forward. I've already got a couple of ideas about how to do this.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Dave. Um, you know, you and I both talked on Friday and I would like a, a committee together, uh, with some community people and maybe some board people to, um, look at the MOU and, um, some specifics that we talked about. Uh, that I think is really important, um, to review and, um, so, and I think the committee and people that took the time to, um, uh, spend and, and discuss this. So I appreciate that. Um, if there's no further questions, we'll move on in the, um, agenda tonight. Uh, okay. Um, the next agenda item is an action item, um, on math instruction materials purchased. And I believe that's John O'Neal.
Good evening. This agenda I had a come, uh, agenda item comes before the board, uh, tonight as an action item. As you know, our district adopted HMH Go Math, AGA Math Instructional Materials in 2016. And our initial six-year subscription expires June 30th of this year. District administration is recommending an extended purchase of these instructional materials as they are familiar to our students, parents and teachers for an additional time period. Further, the literacy adoption for grades PK six, starting this fall, teacher and staff capacity will be limited over the next two or three years in terms of entertaining an additional curricular adoption. Therefore, the administration recommends the board approve the Go Math AGA Math K eight, three-year and H, uh, High School Math two-year material subscription per purchase for $302,492.29.
Any questions for John from the board? Um, does a board member want to make, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a question. I just want to clarify, John. I, I understand that through ODE, uh, those materials have to be in classrooms and by the fall of 2025. Is that, that's correct, isn't it?
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry, the new, the, the new materials, I'm not, not these materials, but whatever we choose.
Correct. And we can apply for a one-year waiver. And we would absolutely get that approved for the reasons of the literacy adoption and, you know, teacher-staff capacity. But that's correct, Mark.
Okay. So if that were approved, then it'd be two thousand twenty-six. Then is that a, is that what you're saying, John?
Yeah, PK five math adoption timeline would be twenty-five, twenty-six school year will be the first year of the new math adoption implementation.
Okay, but, but I guess what I heard you say, I just want to clarify, it wouldn't start in twenty-six, twenty-seven, correct? It would be?
No.
Okay, okay.
That's correct.
I, yeah, I, I don't know what, you know, the whole math adoption is going to take a while to do and I have no idea what we're going to select. I'm just, I'm just, I just want to make sure that whatever we choose, they're in the classrooms when they're supposed to be in the classroom. That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely. We agree.
Any other questions for John? Okay, I will make the motion that that we approve the Go Math AGA Math K through eight, three years and HS Math two-year material subscription purchase for three hundred and two thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Do I have a second?
I second.
Discussion? All right, I will do a roll call vote. Narci?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. The motion is passed. And I think we have future items here. Let's see here. In the packet, there is, Eileen put together a budget update, update by, I think it was May third. That's in the packets for your review. And there's also a update on the, the enrollment report for you to review. Do any board members have anything to share or add to the current list of future items? Okay, if that is, no one wants to add anything to our list. We will adjourn the meeting at six forty-two PM and we will move into executive session. And I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.